Whole concept of the organisation. So I'm particularly looking at the Shandors Park Tennis Club one that's takes that. Thank you.
Bobby.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chairman. There's a long history in which has been discussed endless times why we do grants. The youth centre was because we decided to keep it open and the only way we could keep it open was to a system of a five-year grant so they got security. We did have annual grants, but the trouble with annual grant, you can't plan budgeting for an organisation. So we took a decision to do that, same was taken with other organisations such as the Old Jow. And the C A B, we've always given them a grant and by giving them the security that they know they're going to get that money from us pending financial disaster. Which does that, I don't think the reports saying staffing is just part of the, some of these things, that's the main cost. The C A B have to fund staff to actually go out and visit people because otherwise why would we fund them? They're not going to fund the building, we're funding the operation. And the youth centre, we gave them £25,000 historically to actually stop them going under when we decided to, in partnership with other people to keep them open. So I think that they've got a long history. I think to sort of individually pick the wording out is wrong. If you want to discuss them in a long-term difference to what was done, that means we have to change what our policy is, which is something we can really do. But I don't think that tonight is the night for doing that and, and it brings into question the monies they've got there. They've all gone through very long discussions with many, many people. The one I'm disappointed not to have there, that's a decision of the community centre, is that we would have had an additional grant there for £5,000. But we doubt with that, but precepted in the sense that we built that into our precepted budget. We discussed that at precept as well. So whether, why we did it. So I'm quite content with them. I think that to undo them would cause instability. But I think every council should have the right to rediscuss them if there's something that they feel is a wash. But then we do, if we're going to rediscuss them, we should be discussing with all the information which supported the original decisions, not just rediscuss them blank. Because I feel that would be challenging to accept and probably irresponsible. So, you know, I'm minded to support those in principle as they are part of the precept.
Howard first and John then.
Well, I'm trying to say it really good. It's really for core funding. It doesn't get any help from the government and all the money comes from people who donate and their loans. I don't know the pressure of the debt service. So it's hard core funding to enable an office to be open. Other projects perhaps such as visiting people in villages, a square back-up gives a donation to C A B, to enable them to go out to visit people in the villages. And I did forget to declare an interest in Swan Community Hub, which I'm chairing from the Buckingham Summer Festival, which I'm a patron. I don't play cricket.
Perhaps you should start.
I don't push either.
Can I just go to Paul quickly? So the Swan Community Hub, is Howard not allowed to, like myself, is he not allowed to speak or vote?
Oh, no, no. No. I mean, it's always up to members to make that decision.
As a legal officer, it's just good to get.
Yeah.
Charlie? The only item I wanted to ask about was under the ineligible applications, which is Buckingham Table for the maintenance of the Santa Ban, and it says the reason insufficient public benefit is listed. And I think all of the people in Buckingham benefit, all the adults I talked to and all the children you see who are out there waving at the Santa Ban, looking forward to it every single year, they all get benefit from that. There are items of people on here who only benefit small amounts of people, who are members of various clubs. This goes out to all of Buckingham and the surrounding villages. All the kids know it's coming because they've published the Times. And the money they raised all goes to charity, but every adult and child, even my granddaughter in America who's seen them twice, knows they're coming when she hears it, she's out there and they're all out there waving and screaming for the Santa Ban. So I would like them to have benefited.
Okay, I'll go to. Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Just on that point, the two that are down listed as ineligible, reflection, report shouldn't have called that ineligible because they're technically eligible for the money, but they're recommended not to fund just in comparison to the other ones. So there's nothing about them that makes them not qualified. They need the qualifying criteria for funding. And last year, for example, we did fund Florentine Hospital because lots of our local groups were struggling to spend money and doing it, it made sense. But this year we're not recommending to fund them because they've got so much other funding out, funding wouldn't make much difference. And with the Buckingham Table, we're not saying it's not eligible or not appropriate, the recommendation is in light of the overall budget for money of what we've spent compared to what would come back in terms of fundraising. But that's a, that's a subjective view. The members may take a different view on this, would be totally reasonable.
Okay, Lloyd.
And yes, just to expand on that a little bit more, I did speak to them about the costs and the obvious arrangement was because I grew and similar to Santa Ban. And so last year we gave them £1,625, which just goes next to the plan. And then in their route, they raised £2,151 for local groups, which is quite a small difference between those two figures. And they've asked for a similar amount towards yearly maintenance. But also when I spoke to them, they said that they had been saving up money for the last few years to replace the Santa Ban. So, and they said that they had enough to replace the Santa Ban. We think it's probably better for them to go down that route. And then for us to continue to fund the existing van, if that makes sense.
So really, they've got application, if they're going to replace it and not maintain the current one. They've gone in to maintain their current van.
No, they want, so they wanted to keep the current van going. That was what they wanted to do. But they, they could choose to replace it instead.
But they're putting off the pricing yet.
Yeah.
They need more money. I think it was worthwhile some grant towards it.
Right, we'll go Howard, Bobby, then John, and then I'd like to move through the actual grant applications, if that's okay. Because that's what I want us to do with your name.
Mine's a point of order. I'm confused as to what, what the process is because now we're getting into detail in some of the applications. And I thought we were about to do that.
Yeah, I thought we were as well. Bobby spoke and then it was rude not to take Howard's name. Do you want to speak, say?
Chairman, I'm happy to make this suggestion.
One's for qualifications and the Joe being said.
Thank you.
And there are two Santa Flutes in Buckingham. One, there's a table one, which is a van.
Yeah.
Probably does need to be replacing because, and there's the rotary one, which is a stall. Rotary doesn't apply for any grants from, for micro sponsorship next year from when it comes out of the admin account. A table for sponsorship and a water sinking fund, which was supposed to buy a new van. Now with the rotary one, we hire a flapper door each year rather than standing around the rest of the year.
All right, well, we can discuss that when we get to that item. Okay, right, so we'll. Do you want us to do something first, didn't you?
Well, no, no, it's the right time to go through the pack. The only other comment I was going to make was just to remind members that we have agreed the overall budget. So if we change one, then there needs to be a conversation about whether money is moving around far over. So we need to end up with the same code pool at the end of the meeting itself, which I realise makes it a hard discussion to have, but that's the challenge we have.
The pool does have a spreadsheet open, so don't be afraid to change it if you want to. Okay, so we're doing pack A first. And this is the first one, we've got is a C A B. Shall we do a raise of hands for whether we agree, disagree? How do you guys want to do it?
Point of admission, Chairman. I think we've agreed a five-year budget for those studies, whether we've been, we've not agreed.
So if we reach that there was a place at the end of March this year, so there are no ongoing replacements.
Okay, right, so we're agreeing a next four-year budget, thank you.
Right, okay, so do we do a show of hands if we agree? Because in previous years it's been our bidding.
Thanks.
So point of order, Chair, are we not doing the first recommendation first about the shifting of money between the annual grants and the four-year grants?
What I said at the start of the meeting was I proposed that we swap those rounds. Because actually it may be that in talking about the grants, it turns out you want to shift it slightly between them. So actually better to leave that bit till the end.
Right, okay, all right, I'm just trying to keep up.
Right, so C A B, the recommendation is £5,750. Hands up if you want to agree to that amount.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay, and those against? And George, saying you want to take it?
I'm Mr. Hampf, so it's our turn.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Martin.
No, no, you were looking down at time. That's why I almost drew. If we wanted to adjust or agree to adjust any monies on here, otherwise we're just going to go through them. Should we not just vote on giving the Citizen Advice Bureau and then maybe coming back to the monies? Because you may get down to the bottom and say, yeah, we want to adjust this by, you know, such amount. And of course, you've then already agreed all the monies above because nobody said anything. I know it's, you know, it's the egg or the chicken, but.
No, I think we'll just.
We'll just go for it because it's recommended.
It's always open to members, I guess, to make proposals. So if anyone has a proposal or something you'd like to move things around.
Yeah.
Right. Forgot, forget us. I have.
Right, I'm just scrolling down to the next one. I think next year we'll have links.
Well, why don't you just put from the agenda?
Um, pardon?
Why don't you just put from the agenda?
Good day.
From the PDF papers.
Which are very long.
Yeah. Um, John, could you take this one, please, as vice chair, because it's the youth centre?
Oh, I see, right, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, right, the youth club's then. Proposal is for £5,200. And that's basically what they asked for. Hands up those in favour of that application.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Any of those against? Any abstentions?
One, two.
One, two. Okay, thank you. I will pass the chair.
Shandors Falls Club, yeah, Shandors Falls Club, they asked for a thousand and recommended a thousand. So are those who agree?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Those who are against? Abstentions? Did you have a hand? Oh, sorry.
There are eight members in the room.
Okay, okay, the Fair Trade Steering Group, £373, what they asked for, and that is what most list. Those who are happy with that, please show hands.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
And those next? Any abstractions?
Can I just, sorry, just, I'm assuming as we're going through, we've agreed the amount this year, but also agreed the four-year amount at the same time.
Yeah.
So, and I've recommended 3.5% increase more of them each year because that's the point for the budget. I'm assuming we'll keep you happy.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
I might want to get charged at a later stage, but this meeting's happy with it.
Buckingham Old Jail Trust, they asked for 6,000 and the recommendation's 2,000, Martin.
If I may make a suggestion here, I think looking through the PDF papers, it said that they wanted 4,000 for the staff and then 2,000 for repair and maintenance, according to that. And the comments here is we've reduced it because insufficient funds to give them the full amount. May I suggest that rather than being in between, we just give them the 4,000 and maybe make an extra 1,000 for the Shandors Road floodlighting? Because that seems to be a bit of a drop in what they've got there to split the two.
Right, so your proposal is, say that again, please.
In their documentation, they said that they needed 4,000 for staffing and 2,000 for maintenance.
Yeah.
We can only give them 5,000, so that's a drop either in staffing or in the maintenance. So my recommendation is that we just give them the 4,000 for the staffing and leaving an extra 1,000 pounds available to us that I would also recommend. So it's sort of one recommendation but two moves, upping the Shandors Road, the Shandors Tennis Club up by another 1,000 to give them at least a fighting chance of the LEDs, floodlights.
And do we have a second for that? Anthony.
Thank you. I was just going to ask, the, the note on the Shandors Park Tennis Club says the amount was reduced due to high reserves, which I take to mean they have their own quite high funding level. So they could fund the LED lights themselves, or at least in part. Is that correct?
So what I call, I call the note, Louise, or my person's information, second, I said it's a total cost of 16,000. They've got 19,000 in reserves and a turnover of 6,000 in a good year. So normally we'd expect them to have 3,000 in the bank. So you could say spend 16,000 out of 19,000 reserves and left them at three, that would be reasonable, but it's tight but doable.
Now, if you're back.
See my point, don't you really? We've got some funds of our own.
All of them have got some funds of their own.
Well, yeah, I appreciate that. I do appreciate that. I appreciate that point, but then I just wanted to be clear about, you know, then organizations have some money that we've even highlighted, you know, that we've even highlighted. And it's worth just asking the question, I thought, so I did.
Absolutely, and you are more than entitled to ask questions. Bobby.
I'm, I'm happy to go with the Old Jow funding. I mean, we've basically got a very good relationship with the Old Jow in the sense that we use it for our Torres Information Centre. And we've built a very good working relationship with them, period. And we also deliver some of our town centre management stuff up there. So by putting £5,000 in there to make them stable, it's actually a bigger investment than the £5,000 because we'd made a large investment as a council into reorganising Torres information to be financially neutral.
I think we're okay, they seconded, so.
So I'm, I'm proposing we do that, but that's my explanation while we're trying to get why we're going to do it, Chairman. Because taking everything in isolation without considering all the facts is a bad thing to do. So, and, and, and they do have a huge building to maintain and only stay, I know, well, yeah, at the weekend, I noticed that and somebody clobbered the building again. So it looks like there's more stonework coming out of the insurance claim. So, and it is a major feature in the town that we need to keep.
All right, thank you. Okay, so those who agree, £5,000 for Buckingham Old Jail Trust, please show.
Four, five, six.
Those against?
One.
Abstractions? Thank you.
I think I've got some link with, I'm a member of something or other.
You've been in, have you, have you been in there at some point?
I'm also, I'm the same project Street Life, I think I'm a friend of Project Street Life, so I can't vote on that.
That's rough. Okay, Shandors Park Tennis Club, they've asked for 4,000, the recommendation is 1,500. What, then?
I'm happy to agree the recommendation because there are other funding streams out there which they can apply to. And this is, this is an ideal project that they could apply as an organisation to the community board. And, and we keep hearing that the community board should fund more things. It's something, they are an organisation, the community board could readily fund. And we would assist them on shorts in, in that process. They are a valuable asset to the town and it is on our property.
Yeah.
If there is a difference, if there was a difference and something happened for some reason why they had to come back to us, well, we would talk to them about that difference and assist them. But I think the £1,500 at the moment is sustainable.
Thank you very much, Robbie. Okay, so those who agree for £1,500, please show.
That's unanimous.
And Project Street Life, they've asked for £2,125 and were recommended 500. John?
Yeah, I'm just curious about this reduced due to location. Could you explain that a little bit more, please? Because I've looked through the application and I couldn't see what it referenced.
Oh, have we got an error in the pack? I just have a quick look.
Well, I'm looking at Project Street Life and reason for the grant is I want to take away some youngsters on a.
So on the big pack, can I just have a quick look?
Yeah, it's on the big pack. It's pack B, page 36 of 104. And it's a residential weekend annually over the next four-year period. For 12 to 16 youngsters plus accompanying leaders, youth activity centres, young people ranger activities, indoor, outdoor, blah, 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 blah. Probably the one over at Little Keynes they often go to, isn't it? Yeah, thank you for that name, I forgot about it. I don't understand why we're reducing the money.
So, hold on a second.
It says valid application amount reduced due to location. Project Street Life are in the town, aren't they? At Leithead?
It's, I think it's because it's fine, it's only going to be for a small number of young people. I think that might have been.
No, that's a mistake. I'm really sorry. It's not, it shouldn't say due to location.
And. What page number is it on?
It's not in the big pack, it's on the colouring report. Oh. And that was actually, I believed you to hire reserves because they built up reserves over the.
So the officer note in the pack.
That's what I wanted, what number.
Says, this is page 3504 in pack B. Reason for grant, the club has a good background identifying young people that would benefit from this kind of activity and long-term support allows this to continue with confidence. The amount recommended has been reduced due to high reserves built up during Covid lockdowns. So they have got relatively more in the bank.
They have got quite a big amount in the bank.
And they've got 17,000 in the bank and a turnover of £8,000 in a good year.
I'm happy to propose that we accept that, the information given makes sense. And we shouldn't really be putting money out of our bank account into their bank account if they actually do have reserves. Because we may have discussions later about other things that we want to fund and that we'll see. And some that we may have to return to in those discussions. So I'm happy because it adds value. And we can do all the discussions about who goes to it, but it gets us nowhere. And I think the recommendations sense it.
John?
Yeah, now that I understand this because of the reserves, not because of the location, just we've got to make sure that's minuted though, otherwise it could be, it could get confusing.
Martin.
I think this reserves is definitely a bit of a red herring. Because what we're looking at here on this particular one against another one, and against a couple of other ones we've spoken about. You know, this may have one of the lowest reserves, but the others have higher ones. And, and as I say, it's all going to be taken in context with the actual organisation. So we ought to maybe find for next year another way of talking about monies. Because, because it throws it out of proportion really.
There, there was a grant subgroup that had spoken about grant applications.
I'm sure there was, yeah.
Yeah, so every, every council had an opportunity to be on that.
They did.
There's a subgroup.
So the subgroup talked about the process, not that.
Oh, okay, fair enough.
So what we did, we did do the whole grant review and that's where we had the conversation about how we use reserves. But we can definitely put on the next or following resources meeting to have a follow-on discussion about.
Yeah, I think we should, yeah, agreed.
Do you still want to add to that? There was a plan to have a review once we had done a complete cycle. So that probably this summer, I think that comes out to you'll have a very complete cycle, so you can review. And they can just go out and take this, you know, basically. Thank you. John, did you?
Yeah, just to affirm, I agree that we need to have a discussion about it because clearly it's an issue. I mean, it's not just about absolute amounts of cash, it's the ratios of cash wanted to what they have in their reserves, to what their turnover normally is. It's that kind of formula that we need to kind of.
Yeah.
Turn into an obvious algorithm that we can make sense of it this time next year.
It's like, it's a value for money really, isn't it? It's like, we need to make sure that all the organisations are and, and that as a town, our residents are getting value for money. So it's completely valid. Right, let's go back to the agenda perhaps. So we haven't agreed, I think, for the shoot on, have we? So £500 is a recommendation, please show who agrees with us, £500.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Against? Abstractions? No, thank you. Um, right, so should we do the ineligible because?
By the word, we, we agreed the wording was different.
Yeah, so they're, they're recommended at zero.
They're not recommended.
Not recommended, they're not eligible, they're not recommended.
The Buckingham Table one isn't, it's not that, just the one of us. So, um, okay. So they wanted 1,625 for their maintenance of the Santa Ban. John?
Well, again, I think we, we were a bit stuffed by the brief description and the summary of the reason. Because that apparently isn't the actual reason, there's something more complicated there about the state of the van. And in fact, it might. And in fact, it might be changed at some point in the future, and therefore is it a worthwhile investment was what I'm hearing from Louise. Um, I just think it's, when we come to review this process, that last column needs to be looked at in a bit more detail because, because I've had a look at the four packs that were sent us. That is about probably in total about three hundred and fifty pages. I can't claim to have read them all. So therefore this is more important and therefore the summary is really, really important.
Yeah. Um, right, so what do you want to do, John? Uh, sorry, Robin.
I listened to councillor Collins' points about what it adds and the equation was, what was it? He put fifteen hundred pounds in, it took two thousand pounds. Public money. And I listened to the conversation that the van is on its last legs, so would we choose to invest in something which isn't going to be there next year? Wouldn't we really prefer to be investing in assisting them and getting something which is going to go on longer, which they won't be coming back for a grant for? So it, I would suggest that we would agree to put some money into an earmark reserve, grant reserve that we would use at a later stage if and when they decide to modernise their van, because I think that's a good use of money. Um, but then that also allows, if the discussion comes back at a later stage, they cannot afford to do that and it's not to go on, we haven't precluded having that discussion, because I think we need to actually revert things at the meeting and councillor Collins made a good point about the value to the community um that it gives and we shouldn't be stopping it. So I would suggest that we put a thousand pounds into an earmark reserve um um against this.
Okay, so anybody want to second that? Is that true? Can I?
It's, it, so it's feasible to do, although they, they have asked in the application form for money for maintenance. So there's no guarantee they would accept. So one of the problems is the council makes decisions without consulting with an organisation about what we're going to do with them. They might have an issue with that. So you could, other option would be to defer this decision and have a further discussion. You can bring that back to the meeting resource in a couple of weeks' time. So that way we can come back to proposals which we know they're happy with.
Which I'm, I'm happy to go with that, but I'm, I'm not as well, councillor Collins said about the value of it and and that the recommendation is to give nothing and.
All right, sure. We're, we're finished, this is just.
No.
Okay. Uh, how would?
I, I do have a problem with it. I know Tabor spent a lot of time and a lot of effort to keep that pan running for the benefit of the community. So I don't have any problem with that. What I do have a problem with is setting up a reserve in the town council or outside bodies. Um, because in the day, you're always sort of saying, well, we'll set up and run your organisation for you because we'll have a reserve for you. There's lots of other organisations that could ask the same thing. We are not licensed to be bankers. Um, so you either give a reserve, give money to them for in a reserve, or you don't. It doesn't prevent them from coming back next year to ask, um, you know, we've got problems on our van. They could find community, um, municipal.
All right, well, I'm happy to pose.
Um, I'm just, just.
Have I mistaken? Sorry, Robin. Um, I'm happy to pose a Paul's suggestion that we um ask them more questions, that we have enough further discussion. Um, is that seconded?
I'm not seconded, sorry.
Robin.
I, I'll second that, but I'd like to say in correction, how is it, we have set up reserves before. We did it for the flood relief fund and we kept the money for um that money in there. So say we haven't done it before, isn't correct. I understand how nervous he's about doing it. I, 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 and that was because it was next surge from circus dancers, if somebody had to bank the money. And and that's where you're coming from, aren't you, however? This is a next surge of circus dancers.
The flood irrigation scheme is for the community and the town as a whole, not more than a particular organisation within the town.
Yeah.
That's where I'm at the problem.
Yeah, I understand, so I'm happy to second it.
So.
So, so ju-just the other thing to clarify is, we need to think about what amount of money we're talking about. Because obviously, even though we can, we can defer this till the next meeting, assuming we're going to make all the other decisions on one-year grants at the minute. Are we then deciding that we're going to take a certain amount off the budget for one-year grants, which is going to be a problem you're going to have to solve in the next discussion? Um, the other, I suppose, creative solution, we have agreed that under contingencies budget, which has now been set for the budget, that up to two thousand pounds of that can be for the project, into the organisation to use in emergency. As a, I sup- I suppose you could move some of that into a one-year, into a grant if you wanted to. Although whether you want to do that with a four-year grant or one-year grant, you'd probably rather do that with a one-year grant than a four-year grant. But you could give a four-year grant and move the money this year and then request that there's a bit of extra budget next year, for example.
I was just so complicated. Martin?
I would like to speak against doing that proposal because in their um PDF pack, they said they had built up enough reserves to afford a new van. And to stop the town council getting into difficulties and putting special procedures in place, I would um like to think that we acknowledge their requirements, um, not pay them anything this year. Unfortunately, but sometimes that's how the world operates. Um, and ask them to come back next year to start increasing their fund uh and reserves in one-year grants as we go through one-year grant process. And then when we get to four years, maybe we can think a bit about it again, if they still have that, but they may have found a different way of doing it.
Yeah, because I do like the suggestion that they can go to the community board. So, um, can I just take Anthony first because he hasn't spoken much and you have.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I've just crossed my mind that we've got to be careful what we're actually talking about. See, we're talking about grants and people who apply for grants. We could easily slip into starting to manage and micromanage people's organisations and say, well, we can give you this, but we won't give you for that. Have you thought about spending reserves this? That's not our business. It's, we would like a thousand pounds to do this. We say yes or no, basically.
Yeah.
And I think we've got to be cautious about that, otherwise we start twisting and bending everything and talking about reserves and things, which is the right heart, but we're working with our heads here, I think, uh, with the residents' money.
All right, I'm, I'm going to take my proposal off the table. So I think it's, it's worth doing after this, and so the discussion's on table. Um, I'll take Robin quickly and then John finally.
I, I was just going to say I seconded your proposal, which now you've taken off the table, which means it didn't make any difference. So, um, but I was protecting your proposal. If we need to carry on an ongoing conversation with them.
Oh, yeah.
Um, to actually sort this out, um, period.
Yeah.
And it could be that what the town clerk said about special reserves, if it was extraordinary, that it couldn't take next year for some reason, that would be something that we'd return to. So what we wouldn't really want to do, situation children didn't get Sansa's flow, would we? Um, and, um, because I enjoy seeing them come up my road, um, really, and cheers me up. Um, and, um, trying to guess who's actually at the top of the chimney pot. Um, but and looking at how it, and, and. Exactly, yeah. But, um, but no, no, I'm happy if that's what we're going to do, if we're not actually closing the door completely.
Just to clarify, Chair, if I may, through you, um, I was talking more generally about all grants. I don't want to set precedence and people say, but you gave them and you didn't. No, we're not against that. It's a grant.
Yeah, absolutely. John, final word?
Okay, again, I think we need to admit this discussion carefully because the people who are looking for money will want to see the reasons. I mean, they can look at the video, of course, but the minutes also are the, are the, are the correct record, as it were. So I think we need to be clear as to why we're not giving money. I think we should make clear that this is, to make it a clean decision this year, they're not having this for four-year funding, but there is always a door open for one-year funding for the next three. Um, arguably, if the issue is about maintenance of a vehicle that's about to be changed, then applying for a four-year funding probably wasn't the best approach to take, perhaps. Um, I, I sort of disagree with what you've said, Anthony. I think part of our role as a town council is to look at the town in the whole and to think about how we can deploy our resources to support the third sector in the town with the view to that helping the town as a whole grow, become a better place to live in, visit and 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 so on. So I think there is a degree of design on our part as well. We're not simply acting reactive. We can be proactive as well about where we want grants to go and we can have those discussions ongoing with organisations that we know do a lot of good in the town, including, including this one. Um, but I agree with you, it's not our job to micromanage where the money goes and how they spend it. But we can offer advice and help and we've got a lot of very experienced staff who can do that as well, including councillors who want to get enrolled as well, of course.
I just took this to be decision time on grant application.
Yeah, I, I propose that, well, if we're not going to, I propose that we do agree with the recommendation not to fund Buckingham table.
Yes, and I propose that we do an amendment. Right, so is everybody going to second John's proposal first? So that is that the um table get no funds this year. Martin? Um, we take that vote first and go to Geraldine's. Yeah.
Well, we chose an amendment.
No, no, something moment. Amendment can't be something that contradicts the motion, so and obviously the motion goes through, then generally the motion couldn't go through.
All right, so those who agree that they don't receive any money this year, please show.
One, two, three, four.
There's a gang.
One, two.
And one of them upstone.
And Michael's on stage, that's two extensions.
And so that's.
Motion.
Yeah, so that's they get nothing this year. Um, the France lighting girl, were you happy for that recommendation as well? Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah, thank you. One big box. Um, we have transitions UK. Two thousand pounds. We have, because that's a hands-up, if you agree for the recommendation that they get two thousand pounds.
Did you take what you want to add in general questions before we got into the list, it's worth, so it's.
Yes, I think it'd be better. General brief.
Don't worry, you're not going to speak.
Yeah, can we have a general?
Um. Does anybody want to ask, uh, Paul, any questions about Transitions UK?
Yes.
Yes. Come on, it was over to Robin's last, and then you.
Yeah, I think we need no further because it's a public meeting and what they do, when they do it, for the, for the actual, it's in the paperwork, but it's a public meeting and making decisions. Brief explanation of what they do and what the benefit is for Buckingham.
Louise to.
Louise? Uh, so Transitions UK, um, they, although they're called UK, they're not entirely national. Charity, they're fairly nearby, um, and they've been expanding operations across the area and they've started paying attention to Buckingham because they already work in Luton Keynes, they have a hub there and they're starting, probably they're starting to cross over with young people from Buckingham at their Luton Keynes hub. So that's why they identified Buckingham as a place they want to start the hub. It's the hub, um, when they set up hubs, they're specifically for mentoring of vulnerable young people who potentially could be victims of um, how do I phrase it? But essentially exploitation and leading to offending behaviour and that kind of thing. So they're looking at young people who are pretty vulnerable. Um, and it's a specific mentoring programme. They're in contact with the kids every week, most of the year, including in holidays. Um, for several hours a week, um, and that's a mixture of online and face-to-face. They do in-person sessions as well. They give them opportunities to get work experience, um, and to take part in positive activities. Um, it's a fairly new group, but they have really good local connections, um, and it looks really positive. I'm talking to them, I felt confident that they had a good plan for what they wanted to do and how they would deliver it. I think it complements, it was a personal view of mine. I felt that it complemented some of the other groups we have in the area that do similar things by slightly targeting people who maybe don't get picked up by those groups by taking referrals from, you know, social services or whoever. People identify to young people that meet out.
And where are they going to be based out of?
So they don't have a specific hub here. Um, okay, so I know that sounds slightly weird to say, but they, they will um have activities that are here and they will meet people here, but they won't have one permanent base here.
Okay.
So they don't, they wouldn't have a room building.
So they're not meeting young people then?
They do meet young people, but in different places.
Okay. It sh- it does sound very much like the youth offending team that is running out of our Shire Council. So I, I wonder, as, as these offending teams step back now, are they not doing that job? It sounds very much like the youth service when they pay the action for youth to do the youth work. It's, it almost sounds like this.
I know somebody contacted Paddy recently about having some sessions next door, but I don't know whether it was these people or whether it was the defending. I thought it was the defending, but can't be certain on that.
We, we haven't got detailed information on the defending team. I am aware they're very, they have struggled with funding capacity for a long time, so I'm sure this.
Do you mean the defending team, it's a Shire Council?
Yeah.
They shouldn't be borrowing that funding, that's part of taxpayers, isn't it?
Yeah, there's a decision how much the council is able to choose. But I, I don't have detailed information on that.
Yeah. Geraldine? Well, I have the same question as Robin, but I, I'd be, my added bit was, where does that mean funding comes on? Eventually now, who funds them?
It's always. Um.
It's a little, I'm sorry. I've just noticed by the way that they have in May, they do have a breakdown of costs at the beginning of pack C. So they do talk about going higher and youth schooling, community process, but I don't, I get the impression it's not always the same. Um.
May I make a comment while Louise, uh?
Yes, you can.
Without putting too much stress on her. Um, yes, I saw this and I was, um, I like this. Um, I think it's difficult sometimes for organisations, clubs, um, projects to start up. Um, and I'm quite willing to uh support this in starting up because that's sometimes where you need um a fair amount of money. And I do believe that they can coexist with um more government orientated organisations because they can do things that maybe those large official channels um prohibit uh a government organisation doing. And they could be more flexible. So I, I'm in favour of giving them this one-year uh grant to enable them to make a base and show their wherewithal in this area, especially around these type of um uh vulnerable people.
Well, just to add before I take John, that the youth offending team, if they are still running out of the Shire Council, they are in direct contact with social services and family support teams, um, because it's all under the Shire Council and the youth, and the youth service. And, um, I know a couple of the youth workers that are now practitioners and they work specifically with targeted young people that are in um, in danger of, um, you know, criminal behaviour. So I would have thought that might just still going on, but maybe not. John?
Well, I think it's another, you know, voluntary social enterprise organisation that will hopefully complement the statutory services like youth offending teams and so on. And the same way they say young carers, you know, complements the work that goes on, the supporting families and everything else. Um, it's, it's a model that I've not seen before, six thousand support per week to some of these people. That's a lot of time to engage a young person, especially one who's probably living on the edge, as it were, of, of wanting to be engaged in much at the moment. So I, I think I agree. I mean, I'm a second what, what, what Martin's proposing. Um, and with the request, I think it's part of our process anyway, some degree of evaluation as to what this is value for money. Six people, two thousand pounds for one-year support. If you break it down, it's only three hundred and thirty-three per person, which is peanuts really. It's obviously going to be paying for some sort of cost. I mean, I've been a youth mentor in the past. And you get a small budget to pay for, you know, ten-pin bowling and that sort of thing, so you can charge that expense back to the organisations, or you've done it before, I'm sure, Lisa. So, yeah, I think it's worth, I think it's worth a punt um on supporting this of activity. And what I hope to have got all the other links put in place whereby they will complement and not try and compete with the other resources in the town, because they're obviously going to be overlapping in various places probably.
Okay, so we've got a proposal to Martin, and I can tell you, I founded it's a charity that's basically, that started off in Luton, it's based there, the head office. That just runs under as a charity. Okay. All right, um, Robin? I'm going to go to the folks.
I think one of the things you have to consider. I think one of the things you have to consider is. Six hours is a long time, but if one of these individuals don't go on to become. A permanent offender that breaks the cycle, this is a really good investment, isn't it?
Yeah.
What we do need to do, I think, in uncovering that with them, is to just make sure that they are in contact with. As the chairman said, youth offenders, that they are working, um, bilaterally across, um, organisations. And that what we're not actually doing is, um, that they are aware of them, I don't. Um, but we, what we should be doing is, um, causing a problem by something, so I think this is a really good thing to do. To note that we just want assurance that they are in contact with principal organisations and that they are aware of them. And, um, and, and so on, because I think that's a good thing to do, because there may be crossovers, because what worries me with the two thousand pound funding. Is we say we fund them to start up the project and this gets youngsters, but it may take more than twelve months to, um. Effect challenging activities with an individual and then at the end of the twelve months period, they haven't got any funding to, um, continue it. In which case, we have to be aware that they probably will be coming back again, because, um, some of those cases will go into another year.
Yeah.
So, um, um, but also, lastly, chairman, that we ought to make them aware that, and point them. Um, directly towards, um, the community board as well, because it, and, and ask them to, um. Appear at the community board and.
I can suggest that.
Um, as a way of them, so that they could be assessed in a wider thing. Because if it, if it failed after one year and you've got children halfway through a process, that'd be worse than doing nothing at all, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
You know, that's what my worry with it is.
Just say it's half funded by the National Lottery and there's that, they, they. Fact is, he is the whole coordinator by profit membership.
I'm not going to suggest we spend two thousand pounds a lottery ticket.
Just, just to answer the question, they do access a lot of grants and funds already, and I think they've got. From last year, they had a good seven hundred thousand coming in from different sources. Um, so I think they're well, well prepared on that side. I know that they are also working for Buckinghamshire Council. Or with Buckinghamshire Council, I think they have access to community board funding in other areas and.
Um, so.
I'm not aware of them having that in this area as well, but I think they are thinking about different funding thoughts.
Both of them.
It also talks about this project being a two-year budget, project, whether they're going to.
We just had, one of the things we discussed when we were talking about the project in the office was, actually this could be an example from the project, which is happening around the county, but might not be delivered in Buckingham without our input. So it might be a way of getting some feet on the ground in Buckingham to start with, because there, there is a need in Buckingham, a great need elsewhere, which is probably always faced. So if it's a good way of getting them here in the first place and then going to the community boards, definitely that might be a rule.
Yeah, okay, so the guys at the votes, then both are seconded, that they get two thousand pounds, so those in favour, please show.
That is unanimous.
Thank you very much. Martin, Angela, um, like Buckingham Parish Church for the Jubilee Beacon, um. Talk a bit louder. Um, okay, they wanted three, two, four, and our recommendation is to give them three hundred and four pounds. Uh, Robin?
Absolutely support principle of the project. And you look in their reserves, they've got four hundred and ninety-nine thousand pounds in savings and reserves. So they've got a hell of a lot of money and, and six hundred and eighteen thousand pounds in total funding.
So you are in favour?
I'm in favour of the pro, pro, project, but I think we ought to discuss, which point was made earlier by Martin, and earlier about, um. What money they've got, is this something that we could fund from events period if we wanted to do this? Um, um, and if we are doing jubilee things at all, if we do agree to fund it. Um, I think that we're hoping to work in partnership on delivering these events. And, and it'd be, be something that we did together in the community. What we would be doing is taking the decision tonight that we have a beacon at the church, which is a solo decision that they've taken, which we fund. And then we'll go and discuss the events in a budget where we've got money to spend on it, because we give precepted money to do it, already now aware that. But that is something we're going to have to build into the programme. But it is interesting that they've come with so much money, I mean, we could do with some of that in our preset. Um, um, it's quite wealthy, aren't they? Um, but the project is really worth doing, I mean, I'm.
Paul, answer your question about the, um, event side of that, Paul?
So, yeah, just a couple of points, one is they've applied for half the cost of the whole project, so taking account of the reserves. That, that, that makes more sense. Um, and in terms of jubilee, we can obviously see the advantage of this for us would be, there would then be a beacon lighting, which the church would arrange, but using outside the church now, green. Which would fit with the other events we planned, because we haven't put anything in the pipeline or in the budget for the beacon lighting ceremony on Thursday nights. We have put something in the budget for Thursday in the daytime and Friday night and Sunday. So actually it would gel quite well with what we've, we planned in, it would mean they would be arranging something, writing us to it. And write it out to it, uh, which helps because we can't start from anything right.
So after that, I'm happy to propose that we do agree with the presumption that they actually make sure that the community know we funded it. And, um, that we actually funded the beacon and it's in partnership with.
Half the beacon.
Half the beacon, and we funded the light, we funded a bit of the lights up, they can understand, um, um.
Who was burnt?
The bit that was burnt, yeah, and, um, you know, and I'm going to do that as long as, is that people are aware that we've actually funded it, I think that's important to.
We'll make sure that happens. Um, what do you think of John? Okay, two quick things, one about their reserves, and they have very, very major building work to come because of issues that they've got. So I wouldn't look at that figure as they have actually necessarily got loads in the bank. Um, but the other one is the. Ah, sorry, what was I going to say? Oh, um. Acknowledging that, yes, that's very much in the new, in the new grant system, is that everyone who has a grant has to acknowledge that they've got funding from us, so. Maybe they should do that. Got another one going, I'm back to yous.
So the money that's in their, their budget for funding, will that pay for the spire that they're about to burn down? Um, because it says here that the gas beacon alight atop their church. That, that sounds intriguing. Well, I know, but where's it going to be? Um, I'm, I'm, I'm intrigued to see this, but I think, yes, I think we should support.
They burn the church down.
Where are they going to burn this thing from is what intrigues me.
More than the six hundred thousand pounds, John.
Yeah, it'll take more than that to build a new church.
So, um, those who agree that they get three hundred and twenty-four pounds, please show. You know, that's such a mess. Thank you. Um, right, previous applicants, so Buckingham United Football Club, they wanted a thousand, recommendation a thousand. Um, has anybody got any questions? Right, so those who agree, please show.
That's unanimous.
And, yeah, Buckingham Town Cricket Club, one thousand five hundred pounds for sale panels, does anybody like to ask any questions?
Margaret? Thanks, I'd just like to make a comment, I think it's a really good thing to support somebody doing something like this. And maybe we should encourage other groups with buildings to do the same.
Agreed.
All right, so hands up for those that agree, one thousand five hundred pounds.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. West End Bowls, thousand pounds flood defence, do you ask a question, Martin?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, go ahead.
I wonder if somebody could throw some, uh, light on this for me, because there are, um, private individuals in the town, which, uh, and businesses, which maybe. Do not have, or have not applied for, that's their fault of course, um, flood defence. Um, and I saw this and I thought, hmm, you know. Really, we are supporting the whole town in, in this effort, um, but these people have had. Uh, the insight to apply for a, a grant. And I thought it was good, but on the other hand, it did sort of just niggled me that other people could also do with some. Flood defences as well.
We can't afford people to.
No, I know, but it was.
And really, it's good then that they have a pride, because it is an issue. So with your logic, it's good that they have a pride, just the other ones didn't.
Yeah, I know, it just didn't sit right, really.
Uh, Robin?
I'm happy to support this, the, the club has an ongoing issue with the site where it is by the river. We also support the other bowls club because it's within our premises, not to support this would be wrong. Also, they've got the long-term problem of, um, hopefully one day to have a new site. Uh, and if this thousand pounds manages them to get to the day when they can actually deliver a new site. Keep them there so the bowls can take place and that community activity is there in the town, this is awfully cheap. So on that basis, I'm happy to propose we agree.
John, you've got questions?
Yeah, they have got forty-five grand in the bank.
That's because they want to build a building.
Well, oh, yeah, I suppose.
So just the church?
Yeah, yeah, I guess. Well, this is, this is back to Martin's point of value. There's reserves and there's reserves, you know.
It's like, because they're trying to buy a building.
Right, so, um, those who agree, thousand pounds for West End Bowls Club.
That's unanimous.
Um, Swan Community Club, Howard is, um, expressed an interest in that. So they wanted one thousand three hundred and eighty pounds. Has anybody got any questions? Right, okay, hands up if you agree Swan Community Club get one thousand three hundred and eighty pounds.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
And those against?
None.
Abstentions?
Two.
Okay. And the Buckingham Festival, that's, sorry, Buckingham Summer Festival, two thousand pounds. Anybody got any questions? Robin?
I'm happy to propose we agree.
Okay, um, right, no questions, right, back, Martin?
This is one that could go into the four-year scheme, because it is an ongoing one, we support them on an ongoing basis. I think we ought to have a conversation in four years' time that may, uh, swap over.
We could certainly have that sort of conversation that we're going to have.
Well, I'd add, add a point to that. Um, so when we set a new policy, one of the things we agreed was that we, we would either be giving people a four-year grant. Or we'd give people a one-year grant and not expect them to come back next year. So, now they haven't asked for a four-year grant, so we're not recommending to give somebody more than they asked for. But by the same token. We have given them money every year for good understandable reasons, I'm sure it's the right thing to do. We could end up in a situation next year where we're recommending not to give them money next year. Because the new process is that we're not expecting to give the same one-year grant out every year, as those grants should have gone to a four-year process.
Yep.
So you could give them a one-year grant. And see if, and contact them, see if they want to, or create a process just for them, because they did in one of the three-year grants, that's making up something that they'll be able to access to.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a dangerous unintended consequence in the situation we're in with them, I'm, I'm trying to think through a really.
We don't want to go down those avenues, we would either.
I recommend it, yeah. Um, Robin?
We, we also. Will be aware, I'm sure, not that we support them in other ways, in the sense that through the fringe festival. We, we agreed, because originally they were funded quite radically by the district council board of funding. Part of our support in the actual principle of the, it was the festival fortnight. And the role in which now is called the fringe is we carried on supporting their promotions, which goes out in the booklet. Which is done by our promote, uh, people, Chuseit, that dog, I think, isn't it, Chuseit voice, and, um. And they promote that at the back end, so we do do that additionally, so even if we don't. Next year give them any money, we're still giving them support, and there was always the thing that, um. Historically, we probably sponsored a event and then that event goes to, um, Madame Mayor or. Would be attending it next year, hopefully, and, um, and opening the event because we sponsor it, because we actually did sponsor that event. I think it's a thing that, it's an historical thing that's carried on in various different ways. And we sought ways to fund it, because the summer festival is quite a big thing for Buckingham, recreating that whole mechanism would never happen. Who would you get to recreate all that? And, and this money is quite reasonable, committing the amount as good it does. And we haven't got anything like that in Buckingham, um, per se, and these, I mean, I've been to one or two of them before, can't say I've understood what's going on, but I've been to one or two of them before. Um, um, but, uh, listen to the music and come out, um, impressed, but it's not my type of music and I thought it was brilliant. Yes, but I do think you need to count supporting them, um, but I just thought you had the background about what else we do.
Okay, Paul?
I mean, just considering what's been said and considering they have what unique status because of their role and where they've been supported in the past. Would members consider just offering them a four-year grant, doing that, because. There's, there's a bit of an implication that we have supported in the past, we'd want to do so in the future.
Yeah.
And like I said, I don't want to be just in next year of us recommending not to fund them because they haven't gone through the right process, when actually that's not the spirit, the way we want to support them.
Exactly, absolutely.
Organisation, but obviously that is taking a step off, offering someone a four-year grant, not ask for anyone.
I would certainly recommend that we push them over into the four-year grant page this year, even though they haven't asked for it.
There won't be a four-year grant progress next year, because it's a four-year process.
In which case, you're right.
They'd have to offer them, if they might refuse.
Yeah, there's often.
Margaret? Yeah, thank you. It may be that they've missed some of the process, because it wasn't an easy, I, I didn't find it terribly easy, I'm, I'm rubbish at this sort of thing. Um, and I did go to the, um, Gala concert last summer. Um, although I hadn't been invited as mayor, but I went and said who I was and they, they took me up to, I got a prime seat in the house. Which was lovely and it was good to, I, I think it really is important to the town, so we need to show that we are fully behind them. And maybe if we do make that suggestion and then we enable that, because it's not going to have any impact on this year's budget. But it, obviously it will in future budgets, but that's not a problem tonight, is it?
No, it's all.
No. Okay, so, suppose all that, we move them over to a four-year grant, um, I'm happy to, I don't know who plays it, it's Martin.
I don't think it is.
Yeah, um, okay, so we show pounds that we give them two thousand pounds this year and move them to a four-year grant.
After talking. Yeah, often, often, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, if those in favour, please show.
One, two, three, four.
Thank you.
With the, with the gamble.
Those abstaining?
Well, I'm sure.
Okay, so now.
That's actually, that's what I'm saying. But they, they, they clearly.
Well, it's not back for, just, just the videos, so they, they.
I know that, I know that.
Um, Buckingham and District Angling Association, um, we have had them come to us before and that St Braster has been before, how many ago, sir? So six hundred and twenty-three is our recommended amount, Martin and then Robin?
Is the word location appropriate in this one?
It is appropriate in this one.
I was just fishing.
Did you catch it?
I was ducked, I was coming out, I know. What was that, it was awesome, you just wanted to.
Get a duck jerky.
Yeah. And, Robin and then John?
I, I think this is a really good thing to support, I think that, um, the, um, angling is a social sport. It's good for people's mental wellbeing, um, a lot of people took it during lockdown, um, and lots of work in there and. It's always quite interesting to walk along and see what they've actually caught. Um, and, and, and to know that there is some fish in the river, good enough for them to be there, so. And also, joking aside, they actually pay a lot of attention to the quality of the water, the river, and they report back to us, which is brilliant.
Yeah. Leak, yeah.
What does it matter?
John?
Yeah, just to be clear, it is a private lake, it's not actually part of the water, uh, part of the river as far as away, I guess it probably does feed from water between the two, but.
It's a prestige business.
The, 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 is it, is that where it is? I thought it was down the canal way, not that, not that one down the way then, on the four-two-one, four-two-two.
Tide Lane Lake, yeah.
Yeah.
No, that's a different one.
Oh, right, okay, well, I've got no idea where this is then, obviously. But I, I, yeah, I, I do know that forty percent of their membership live in Buckingham, the six percent live elsewhere.
Of course.
So ordinarily, we wouldn't even give them money at all, so I think they're lucky to be getting six hundred and twenty-three quid.
Well, I agree with that, so.
But it, but it's a good principle, obviously it's supporting it accessible.
I'll take the.
Okay, so, um, hands up to, um, agree for six hundred and twenty-three pounds.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
I'll take it over, John.
And, uh, Leicester Phil residents association, nine hundred and sixty-eight pound, Geraldine, um, well.
No, not like.
Geraldine?
I just, it says community spirit, so I'm just wondering what they have to spend this money on, just anything and everything. So I do believe that residents association should be doing fundraisers. So I do believe that residents' associations should be doing fundraising, selling. So I just wondered what they're back then, have they got any money?
They just, they just signed a pact, didn't they? Missed that one.
Yeah.
Um.
What page is it? So it's, I'm on page thirty-one out of fifty in PAC D.
Oh, page twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, yeah. If you go down to thirty-one, that's where detailed breakdown of budget is. Uh, committee room hire at today's rate. Um, twenty, plenty signage, hundred fifty pounds plan admin, entertainment expenses, prizes, main donations from local citizens and general admin, two hundred and fifty newsletters, paper, printers, ink, printing.
Maybe they should go out and get sponsors or something like that.
Two hundred and fifty celebrations. And then I think last year I talked about this, when members made a point doing a press release to encourage other residents' associations to do something similar. Which other conversations I've supported them and others.
Hmm.
But no, no others have come forward.
Also flower bombs as well, that I need to throw, flower bombs.
Not flat, flat with bombs.
Well, it's a question I asked, um, last year, hopefully, that, um, you know, there are other associations, um, but all answered it quite correctly, that they're not buying.
Hmm.
Um, because we've got one on Lytton Village, but we've got nowhere that we could meet. So we're meeting on Facebook, that's literally how things, most of the discussions is on Facebook. We have got nowhere to hire. Um, but if it came to a point where that's something that we wanted to set up properly, then I would suggest whoever's in the chair at that point to apply to hear for a grant for that. Because I think we've set precedent that we are supporting a residence association. There's nothing stopping any other residence associations to do the same thing. So, um, Robin?
Well, when we discussed this endlessly over the years, well, a few years that they've been under, originally, it was looked at as revenue neutral, because most of the rent comes back to the town council in any case for the building. So the money that we're giving them, it's revenue neutral. The other things they do are socially worthwhile. I mean, look at the stuff they did during lockdown, in community spirit, um, the events they run, the, the snake, never in else that they did during lockdown, but we, we'd actually set and do that. We wouldn't have had the ability to do it, because they do it. So they do a lot of community work. So it's a small amount of money over the renting we did, but, and actually to have some income to be able to book a hall, have a meeting, decide it. Also, what you don't realise is, they, they do an awful lot of work, uh, which I have been involved in, um, in, in making sure that the residents are aware of, um, the management charges, the, um, the business with the swell debt, swell and all the things on there and the, the roads, the adoption of it and stuff that they've been doing for a number of years. And if we were to do, if, if all those questions come back to the town council office to do, which they could quite easily do, that'd be a lot of work. And they've been doing all that work for the residents. And this is a small amount of money. And also, we were conscious when we did it, it was a brand-new community setting up. And we wanted to have a link between the town council and the Laissill Residents' Association.
They were dealing with a lot of issues.
And, yeah, exactly. And, and we were reminded that, that we needed to support them. So I'm happy to support the amount of money in there, because for what we get for that nine hundred and sixty-eight pounds, uh, with the value that they did in that community, it's a very good investment.
And we can still, you know, make the fact that we are here for future, um, residents' associations. So, uh, those who agree, nine hundred and sixty-eight pounds, please show.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. And, um, the Slaver Creation Club and it's, um, recommended zero. So those in favour not to give them any money this year, please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Those get. So, thank you. Sorry.
It's a, why does?
Oh, the rest of the part. Yeah.
By the, they've got the bottom down.
Yeah, yeah.
We're huge. Still going there.
We ought to go in there sometime, to Liverpool.
They do.
Yeah, yeah.
They do.
Okay, so we've done the points. Thank you so much. I believe for your patience with that. Um, I don't have any announcements.
Oh.
Date.
I'm sorry, so, so just to clarify for sake of minutes, going back to the first calculation, it's not the split, it's the two different parts. So my calculation is based on the agreement we've just made to move the two thousand pounds to four-year grants. Yeah. That would make two-one-three-two-three in total of four-year grants. And eight-seven-nine-five in total of one-year grants, which still adds up to three-zero-one-one.
Okay, good. I'm pretty happy with that.
Agreed.
Agreed. Now, I was going to say it next week, it's fourteen of March, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Nina, thank you, Louise, thank you, Paula.
Thank you, Paula. Do enjoy that.
That was one of the shortages being enjoyed.
Well, we just, we're systems.
Paul lost that. Sorry, thank you. One second.
We tend to forget, we certainly.